Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's orders suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Men and Select Board is convening by telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Laura. So just some ground rules we always go over. All participants are asked to please mute their phones except for the select board, our administrative assistants, our town administrator and our town council. Everybody, please keep your phones muted. No material, note, all the materials for this meeting are available online through Novus or the town website for the public. Each agenda item will start with a select board discussion. The chair will call for specific participants as described on the agenda. The chair will then open it up to participant comments and questions. If you'd like to make a comment after the chair opens it up, please take your phone off of mute and ask to make a comment. The chair will then recognize you. Participants will be asked to be, to state their full name and address for the record. Once you're done making your comments, please put your phone back on mute unless you're continuing the discussion. All votes will be taken by roll call and the meeting minutes will reflect the remote status. If any technical difficulties arise, the chair can suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made. Okay, so that's that. See our agenda. Assistant statements and petitions. Any assistance, statements and petitions this evening? Okay, hearing none. Let's see, correspondence to the board.
Nothing.
I didn't see anything. Okay, consider authorizing approval of bond sale for the new police station. Laura, would you like to read that language?
Okay, it's, it's a big one, so it might take a bit of time, but sure. This is the vote of the select board. I, the clerk of the select board, which really isn't me, it's, it's one of you guys, but that's fine, of the town of Mendon, Massachusetts, certified that a meeting of the board held June 22nd, 2020, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a forum was present. The following votes unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Further voted that the sale of the 1,250,000 general obligation police station bonds of the town dated June 30th, 2020, the bond, to the Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of 1,442,843 and 42 cents. An accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on May 15th of the years and in the principal amounts to bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Okay, I'll read the, I will go through each one individually. Year 2021, 65,000. Rate, interest rate, 5%. Year 2022, the amount of 75,000, interest rate of 5%. The year 2023, the amount 80,000, interest rate 5%. The year 2024, the amount 85,000, the interest rate is 5%. The year 2025, the amount is 95,000, interest rate 5%. The year 2026, the amount 100,000, the interest rate 5%. The year 2027, the amount 100,000, the interest rate 5%. The year 2028, the amount 100,000, the interest rate 5%. The year 2029, the amount 105,000, the interest rate 4%. The year 2030, the amount 110,000, interest rate 4%. The year 2031, the amount 110,000, interest rate 3%. The year 2032, the amount 110,000, interest rate 2%. The year 2033, the amount 115,000, the interest rate 2%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bond, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June 11th, 2020, and a final official statement dated June 22nd, 2020. The official statement. Each, in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and are, and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bond from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and comply with the relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page by a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all relating thereto, having, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote. I further certified that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy there listed in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in 940 CMR 29, 29.032B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays. Prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 30A, Section 18 to 25 as amended. Further suspended, supplemented or modified by the executive order of the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12th, 2020.
Thank you, Laura.
It's all right, Chris. Chris, can I, Laura, can you just reread that?
Really?
I'll take a, I'll take a motion as read.
So moved.
Have a second, Mark?
Second.
Okay. All right, discussion on that. Do we have any further discussion on this, Kim? Kim, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here, sorry. I'm just muted because the dog is barking. Nope, no other discussion. Sale was held, the money to make the payment is budgeted for, we're good to go. We kept our bond rating, everything is status quo.
Okay. Lonnie, any other discussion, any comments, discussion on that?
No, sir.
Mark?
Nothing here.
Anything from the audience? Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Real aye.
Our aye. All right, we have a bond. Very good. All right, so moving on. Consider.
Can I ask a quick question? Laura, you had sent over two list of motions. Is one different than the other? I just have both of them, I can't see any difference, but.
No, I was waiting for that big dissertation that I just read from Bond Council. And wouldn't you know, I got it five minutes after I sent the first one. So it's, it's the same. You're good.
Yeah, Laura, thank you for doing that. I know it was helpful.
I'll just have a sip of water, I'll be good, thank you.
All right. The art of delegation right there, I love it. All right, so consider temporary outdoor dining area, outdoor table service, on premise alcohol, common vehicle license, approval for Willbrook restaurants. Take a motion on this, Lonnie.
Yep, so moved as written.
Second.
All right, so this is the same thing we've been doing with everybody else. Any further discussion on this?
No.
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Real aye.
Our aye. All right, very good, welcome back to business. Consider raising the spending cap for the parks revolving account from 125K to 150K for FY '20. Take a motion on that.
So moved.
As written.
Second.
Okay. So Kim, you want to give us an update on this, or is Dan on the line?
Where, Dan's on the line as well. Just, he'll talk you through it. This is for this fiscal year, not next fiscal year.
Yeah, so when we created this revolving fund, we had estimated our expenses at 125 and we just, we underestimated, our payroll was up higher than we thought. We also had several unplanned expenses, some urgency tree work. And then on top of it, all the COVID stuff just pushed us right over the limit. So we're looking to just bring it up to the 150, which is also the amount we're asking for for the following fiscal year, because I think that's more in line with our actual expenses.
Okay. Any comments, Mark, Lonnie?
No.
Nothing for me, nope.
Okay, any discussion from the public? Hearing none? Okay, all in favor?
Hold on, Cindy has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, Cindy.
I just want confirmation for the amount that is in the fund.
Yep, hang on. I had the number and I just, it's in an email, give me a second. It's somewhere, it's $64,286, give or take.
It's what?
$64,286 is the current balance in the account.
So they're looking for 25 grand and he's got 64 grand as a balance. Okay, thank you. Good question. All right, any other questions on this? Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Real aye.
Our aye. Okay. There you go, thanks Dan on that. Town administrator update?
We have a couple of things that we added tonight to the agenda, so I'll keep it brief. I also would like, I know Don is also on the line to talk about some police station issues that didn't make it. And I think rather than putting them on for town meeting next week, we should take a few minutes tonight to go over them. And then that we also need to have a discussion about the CARES Act funding in relation to the school district and BBT. Both have made requests now for some portion of using the CARES funds. So I'll just, we can wait until after town meeting for that and add it to our first agenda in July, okay? But I think the board definitely needs to weigh in on the amounts and how we decide how much, if any, we have available to give to the schools.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kim. So we have a couple of of agenda items not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours. One is the discussion of the Fire Engine 1. It sounds like we just learned that Fire Engine 1 has some pretty significant issues. Chief, you want to update us on this? I can't tell you, Chief, you're on the mute. I believe. Lonnie, I can't hear him, bud.
You might have to use a different browser.
Yeah, or he has to reboot.
I just, I just muted him, go ahead and unmute, Chief, see if that helps. A little bit, but you had headphones on originally, do you need those on? Is it using that microphone maybe?
I can barely hear him, but I can hear him.
Maybe he needs to increase his volume.
No.
All right, any better with this? Hello?
Hmm, can barely hear you.
All right, I'm gonna call in, okay?
Oh, wait, that's better.
That's better.
All right, maybe I just need to talk a whole lot louder. That's much better. All right. As you know, I put forward an article for the Springtown meeting to replace our Engine 4 and had agreed that with all the COVID stuff going on, I would postpone that for consideration to the fall, even though it appeared that the boards all were in favor of it, it was just an interest in keeping the meeting short. Last week, we sent our, well, a couple of weeks ago, we started sending our apparatus to another mechanic, highway department used to do it. And Engine 4 went last Thursday, Engine 1 went last Thursday. And the report back was that the frame is rusting and rotting. I did go down and look at it and you can see that, that that it is flaking away. Does that mean it's imminent or that it has to, that it's gonna break in the next month, six months, a year? Five years, we just don't know. But knowing that we need to replace Engine 4 and then having the risk of Engine 1, if that frame cracks, we can't repair it. The mechanic told us that it falls back on the manufacturer, whether you can weld it or not. No manufacturer will authorize a weld repair to a frame. So I wanted to bring it to the attention of the leadership of the town so that they know the situation we're in, that if Engine 1 does go over a bump or just hit the weight of the truck, puts a crack in that frame, it's done, we have to take it out of service right away. So I don't know if the board would be open to considering funding like a one year or putting the article back on the town meeting floor for the end of June. I know it's really short timeframe, I understand if it's just too short, but I just felt I needed to make you aware of it and see if that might be an option.
Well, that stinks.
Yeah, it does. My plan would be, if we are able to replace Engine 4 now, would be to put Engine 1 into the, to the backup role and that way we reduce the stress on it. Right now, that truck, because of the way that Engine 4 is, Engine 1 is always going out. So I think if we put it in the backup role, obviously we reduce the possibility of, of that frame becoming weaker or cracking. I have a couple of quick, oh, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead, Lonnie.
So is it still on the agenda and do, is it an override item or is it just a funding item?
So the good news is that it's still on the warrant as an article. We were just gonna pass over it. So really, all we need to do is authorize that we want it and then it can go to FinCom before the meeting and then they can debate funding sources. It's not on for override, it's on by itself. It's in the special article. So we have 300,000, 320,000 in CapEx available and we have about just under a million in stabilization. I think, I think it would be wise to now consider some level of funding towards sorting this out since it's already on the agenda, rather than waiting till November. I mean, I think it's kind of risky.
I mean, listen, we have an urgent request. I think the only risk of, of looking for the funding source without doing an override on that is that are we gonna do a lease on this, Chief? Are we gonna do a?
Yeah, I mean, I, I did the exploration of a lease. That had been my, I shouldn't say recommendation, but suggestion a few months ago was to enter into eight-year leases on the apparatus and build that cost into the budget. And that way, and you know, there's three trucks we really need to worry about on the fire side. That's gonna be the two engines and a tanker moving forward. So doing it on an eight-year basis just puts them on a continuous revolving replacement program. An eight-year lease on a truck, assuming, we've looked for program trucks and demo trucks to try and reduce the lead time from a year down to a couple of months. It's looking like we might be able to do it for $50,000 to $75,000 less than getting a spec truck built. The only thing we would be missing off of these would be a front or rear suction, which you really don't use all that often and we have the suction ports on the side. So it's not a big loss. The lease payment over an eight-year, if I remember correctly, was just under $75,000, assuming a $525,000 truck.
So the, we're always going with this is the, there's always a risk when you try to fund something out of an operating budget and that budget can be changed at any time. And we're gonna be on the hook either, you know, doing a CapEx purchase or even a lease. And I believe now with the FASB 13 rules, laws, we'd have to capitalize that anyways, I think, Kim, but I'm not sure. But it's, the, there's a concern there. So, you know, the, I would just, if we move forward with this, I think we have to put it out there because we have to keep our town protected. But I'd really urge the FinCom to take a good look at that and weigh that into their considerations as we look for funding sources on this side.
The other piece of good news is that in, during the budget process, CapEx actually supported this request. So that part of it's already done. I mean, really, it's just figuring out how much and from where. So if the board is in support of moving forward, then I'll meet with FinCom before the meeting next week and we can figure out. But I mean, I would be, a $75,000 payment is scary. I mean, we could fund the first year out of CapEx and do a transfer and then look at other options, you know, as we see what our financial situation looks like. I mean, we could always pass it later again as a debt exclusion, as we've done in the past. So that's a possibility once we have more time.
Yeah, I still, to me, I still, we have to keep the town protected. So thousand percent agree that we have to do something. I always just get really concerned when we sign a contract and try to take it out of an operational budget. You know, so I think that having a really solid funding source upfront, either through debt exclusion or through, or, you know, taking out a stabilization or something, which isn't always a smart move. But especially when we're trying to keep our, you know, our ratings, so, our bonding ratings. So I don't know, you thoughts on that, Kim?
My thoughts are hopefully we won't be borrowing anything else for a while and we just got a rating last week. So I think if we were to take $100,000 out of stabilization, you know, that needs a two-thirds vote, but we could probably do it. I mean, we've, we've reached our target, our 5% target, we're right at it. I mean, it's unfortunate, but we could. And we could also, CapEx is half, half of where we want to be. But 75,000 out of the 320 that we have really isn't gonna make a huge impact either way in the funding level, since we're already not funded. But it will make a huge impact on service level, so I think it's something we have to consider. In the operating budget going forward, that, that's terrifying. We'd have to figure out how we'd fund that. But we could transfer from CapEx for a couple of years as the worst case scenario.
Yeah, well, I'm willing, I'm willing to put it on, but you know, we've done this in years past and our citizens have felt, felt like they were, the wool was pulled over their eyes on funding with one-time money. So, or put it, or not, or putting it in, putting it in the budget and then not, the risk of not having the money in the budget in years going forward to cover it. So just throwing it out there. Lonnie, Mark?
I'm good.
No, I, I agree with what you're saying, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's it, I'm good.
Okay, Lonnie?
I'm just saying, I agree with what you're saying as far as that, you know, trying to wait until September. I agree, but I also understand that, you know, that our problem there ahead of time that was in a bad spot. And I think that given, given this, yeah, I don't know, it's a bad, it's a, it's a, it's a tough decision either way. But I would be in favor of putting it on, just knowing that we've had enough trouble this year. Last thing, we need something silly.
Okay, well, this is why we have the FinCom, they can decide how we pay for it. So, all right. Okay, so we obviously have it on the warrant. I don't think we need a motion to, to keep it on there, it's already on there. We won't pass over, Kim will work with the FinCom and we'll see where it goes, Chief.
All righty, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the second thing on here was the Abacus change order number one for the Taft Library feasibility study rectory. So, Kim, I, I saw a $0 change order on this. Can't tell you.
It's just a time extension. Amy Fahey is also on the line, she can speak to the, the contract if you want, but it's just an addition of time.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, the, we had originally set a deadline of June 19th because we had to use up those earmarked funds before June 30th. But the MBLC extended the deadline until the end of fiscal year '21. And so just to give Abacus a little bit more time, we extended their deadline out to the 31st, which is of July, which is more than they need. But it was tight to begin with, so we just wanted to give them a little bit more time.
Okay. All right, so do we need to do a motion on this, Kim? I've seen her shake her head and I just had my.
Yes.
Lonnie, you still with us? Lonnie? Uller? Uller is down, he's down swimming in the water right now. Mark, I'll take a motion.
So I'll move.
Okay, I'll step down in seconds, all in favor?
Real aye.
Our aye, all right. Now, that was the best part of my day right there.
That was good timing.
Who saw that? But Lonnie's daughter just jumped in and did a, a quick photo bomb. That was awesome. All right. All right, thank you, Amy. So the last thing is
Well, before we go into executive session.
Police Department, right?
Yeah.
All right, so we need to talk about the police department. Don, you want to give us an update on where we are?
This is Don Moran, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, yeah, so this is, just be brief. We don't have to necessarily discuss all these items tonight, but maybe it's in the next meeting in a couple of weeks. Just want to make you aware that from a schedule standpoint, the contractor is hoping to wrap up all work by next week. But there's a long punch list of items, right now it's 21 pages long. So there's a lot of things that they still have to touch up. By contract, they have 60 days to complete those items. So we're, you know, between now and the end of August, we're looking at pretty much substantial completion and ready for occupancy. But there were a few items that will be outstanding, that we want to make you aware of when we complete our end of the project. One, the town. One, the town well, I know Dan Byer has looked into that, but there's still very low pressure in the new police station, and the suggestion has been to replace a pressure switch in the town hall. I know Dan Byer has a quote for like $500 to do that, but since the well is really not under our purview, we just wanted to make sure you discuss that sometime in the near future, to make sure that that's addressed. The second item is just more or less long-term, if, obviously, we're gonna turn some funds back over to the town when we're complete. Right now, we have about $130,000 available for the two alternates that we didn't award, alternates number two and three, to demo the existing station and complete the paving. Obviously, you can't demo the existing station until you work out the situation with dispatch. So that'll probably just be, sometime in the future, we'll turn the funds back in, and the town will have to manage that. Having said that, there was a temporary berm placed on the edge of the parking lot between the town hall and the current police station, it'll make it very difficult to plow in the winter, but it's there for, basically for groundwater protection, so we want to, you know, maybe you'll want to consider how you want to devise some parking strategies, so people don't have to drive in that area. I've had some conversations with the town administrator about this already, and she has some ideas, it's something you should plan for moving towards the winter. And the last thing was, actually, two more things. One thing is, when we had that huge rainstorm a couple of weeks ago, lots of water is now rushing down between the former library and the town hall. I guess the nearest storm drain is about two feet away from the curb, so there's a lot of water coming down Main Street, and then now, with all that area in the back cleared, it just rushes down the site. So I know the Highway Surveyor has already contacted me, he says he's gonna look at the storm drain, but it's something I just want to make you aware of. And then the last thing is, we have a temporary generator that's currently being used to support the backup for the existing police station, the well, and the septic. As we move over to the new generator, the new generator is installed, it's ready to support the new building, it'll get turned over, it'll support the well and the sewer, but it was never intended to support the old fire station, because that was going to be demoed. So at the end, the current temporary generator lease ends at the end of this month. We're going to be in the process of converting that lease over to the town, it's $650 a month, it's required to keep dispatch up and running in case you lose power. So I just want to make the town aware of it, it's an unplanned expense, but you really need to support dispatch while that old station is still running. So Chief Curzy and I, we're gonna look into maybe trying to get the current generator to support that station, but it's not wired properly to be able to do that, so I just wanted to make you aware of this. So I think we want to, at some point, we should just come up with a group, a joint meeting, where we can hand a lot of these things over to you, so that nothing gets fault, no, nothing falls through the cracks, because we're nearing completion in the next few weeks.
We'll just have to form another committee, Don, and pull you right in to help manage the group.
That's funny.
You do a good job, and see what happens.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, we can, whatever works for you, you know, let's figure something out, so there's a clean transition and nothing falls. We're certainly not going anywhere, but formally, the project will be completed in the next, you know, essentially, certificate of occupancy will probably be in the next few weeks, and then punch list will take us through probably into August, so it's coming to an end.
So I do want to say that the place looks fantastic, at least from the curb appeal, I'm thrilled with the way that it looks. It's nice to see it where it is now. It's come a long way over the last year, and certainly the efforts of the Building Committee show, so we thank you, you know, incredibly amount, and incredible amount for all the work that you guys have done on this.
And if you want a tour, if the select board would like to get a tour, or something at some point, too, I mean, let us know what works, but it's, there's actually a whole new set of pictures that just got posted this past weekend, if you want to see what it looks like inside and everything, it's nearly done.
Yeah, okay, cool. So, yeah, I mean, Kim, we'll just schedule a meeting at a later date, we'll figure it out, you guys will just keep on working through the issues the way that you normally work. Kim, you'll just bring us up to date if there's something we need to act on right away. Okay. All right, cool, thanks, Don, I appreciate it. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, man, really appreciate it. All right, very good. So anything else, Kim, within 48 hours?
No.
Excellent, all right.
Didn't even let me get the words out.
Yeah, no, I'll take it in my cues. I figure I better do that, because I have a dog also, so I'm between dog barks all day. All right, so I moved enter into executive session under Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21, for the purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Men and Police Civilian Dispatch Union Local 188A.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Real aye.
All right, and we'll only reconvene to adjourn.
Hey, Chris, it's Chief Curzy, can I get the link to that? I didn't get a link to that.
I think Lonnie will, Lonnie's gonna send it over to all of us.
I can send it over, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Is that Lonnie?
Yep. I'll send it over.
All right. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, Cindy, he's gonna send us a new link, we'll jump on, okay?
Oh, wait, I think the new links.